Everybody, I want to thank you all for coming. My name is Wayne Warner and I will be serving as the moderator this evening. We want to welcome you to the 2017 Christiansburg Mayor and Council Candidate Forum. The forum's cosponsors are the Montgomery County League of Women Voters and the Montgomery County Radford City Floyd County Branch of the NAACP. If you will stand with me and pledge allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. For your information, the forum is being videotaped by the town videographer. The county videographer will put the video on YouTube with a link to, let me sure write this all down, www.lwvmcva, which means League of Women Voters Montgomery County, Virginia, dot org. The video is also going to be replayed on the county local access channel 190. We submit, would ask you to submit questions that you might have. There are people standing in the aisles who are willing to take your questions on a card. They will give you an index card to write them down. They'll collect them and pass them to the screeners, who will review them mostly for duplication and pass them on to me. The forum guidelines have been distributed to the candidates. In addition, they've been asked to respond to the league voter guides. In those guides, the candidates write a short biography and respond to pertinent policy questions. The league copies their responses and pastes them into voter guides for that various positions. Copies of the voter guides will be in the league website and paper copies of voter guides are in the foyer and also in the public libraries. The process that we use here is that I will ask questions of all of the candidates and we will rotate the order in which those questions are asked between the candidates. Each candidate has one minute to respond to a question. After all candidates have responded to that question, a candidate wanting to make or give a rebuttal will be allowed an additional 40 seconds to do so. The question period will end at exactly 8:15 and each candidate will have two minutes to make a closing statement. I'd like to introduce the question screeners and the timers. The screeners are Carol Linker, Jim Travis, and Carolyn Rude. The timers, Bev Fleming and Tamara Hudson. We would ask that you please reserve your applause until the end of the forum. The candidates I'd like to introduce are seated alphabetically, starting on my right. Dee Michael Barber, Roger Woolwine are the mayor candidates. The town council candidates, also on my right, Steve Hubbard, Marissa Sax, Bradford J. Stipes, and Jonathan Taylor. Again, the questioning will continue until 8:15, at which time each candidate will have an opportunity to make a closing statement. So we'll start with the first question and we'll start down at my far right. Question is, what aspects of Christiansburg do you want to preserve and improve? What concerns do you have about zoning? That may be two questions, but let's take the first part of it.
Well, obviously, we're out to preserve and to restore downtown Christiansburg in the Cambria section. We have already started on a process that would possibly bring new development downtown, an expansion of buildings that are there. We also want to preserve Christiansburg in itself as the place to grow and the place to raise your family. We offer all the amenities that most cities and towns have to offer and better than most. We have walking trails, we have aquatic centers, we have everything to meet the needs of the individual citizens, which is what, is who we serve. We serve the citizens. So as far as zoning issues, yeah, there'll always be zoning issues and what I think we're good at is working on them as they come forward and we will continue to do that.
Mr. Woolwine?
Yeah. I didn't know if I answered the same question. I think that we need to just find a way that you get the people down to the town of Christiansburg and there are several different things they're working on right now and that should be a great thing that we're going to be doing. But I feel like that there are several things that need to be taken care of and, but I think we've worked hard and Christiansburg's been a great town forever that I can remember, downtown Christiansburg and downtown Cambria. Cambria is a place that was striving at one time and, but I feel like that joining both of them together is going to make us a great place to visit and people are going to strive to go down there.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Basically, we're talking about growth. I'm not sure if you know this or not, but Montgomery County is the fastest growing county in southwest Virginia. We're growing faster than Roanoke County. Christiansburg, if you lived here in Christiansburg 15 years ago, we had about 14,000 people here. Right now, we have 22,000. By 2030, we're going to have 28,000. The thing about it is that instead of the growth is so good that folks have a vibrant place, but also the town's got to be responsible for making, take your stormwater, electricity, water, all of these other things, traffic. All of you that already knows who have been living around here very long have noticed that every day when you come to work, the traffic's increasing more and more. And as a town, we've got to look at that and we've got to try to be prepared for that in the future. And I think everybody who goes to work early Monday morning will remember my comments here. Ms. Sax?
The aspects to preserve and restore Christiansburg, I feel, come back down to values. Our tagline is a progressive small town living at its best and that's what I would like to see continue. But I want responsible growth and I feel like we need to do that by being sensible and watching our budgets and not overspending where we shouldn't and also understanding the needs of the community coupled with the business. Together, we can make Christiansburg restored and we can continue the growth, but we need to do it responsibly. And that's my main focus as well when it comes to preserving and restoring the values of Christiansburg. Thank you.
Ms. Sax, sort of stole my line. I love Christiansburg's motto. It's the reason we've chosen to raise our family here, just because it is progressive small town living at its best. We are progressive and we also have a small town element and I don't want to, I think that's what makes us, keeps us special. And as far as zoning goes, zoning is always a work in progress. It's something that we're always revisiting, trying to adapt and revise and update our ordinance, our ordinances and additional use policies to make sure that we are keeping current with the times and of the needs of our community. A recent example of that is in our industrial zones. We are revisiting that to make sure that we don't need to update and I think we probably will update some of our zoning ordinances, so, okay, that's probably enough.
No, that was the deal.
I've hit the highlights.
Revitalizing Christiansburg, to me, should concentrate on the historic Cambria district. When the town charter was adapted, the old Cambria district was included in that but has since been forgotten. I feel that the town really should put forth a little bit more money to provide one holiday decorations in Christmas time for downtown Cambria. They only have one decoration in front of the electric store. It's a very, very good historic district. We have a train station there that brings a lot of people down to see the 611 train come through. I feel that the sidewalk projects should concentrate in Cambria, making sure that it's safe for one and make it look there.
Next question, we'll start with Mr. Woolwine. Do you have any ideas for youth activities other than what we already have?
Well, if you're including what's out there on 114, that's somewhat in progress, but I feel like that there's a lot of things that we can do. Bike trails and, you know, we've got the Kiwanis Field and the old football field in Christiansburg and a lot of that stuff is just sitting there and, you know, I feel like that we are not utilizing what we have instead of going out there and trying to do something else when we already got several opportunities in that town.
We do have some excellent facilities in this town. I don't think there's a town around that can compare to what Christiansburg has. Our rec center does a wonderful job in the way of basketball, football, volleyball. Then, of course, we have the aquatic center that is here too. And I think it's important, though, that we try to explore that. And maybe there are a lot of few people right here who have never been to the aquatic center, who don't know what the facilities that they have here and have not introduced them to the kids. And I think that's good, if we get the kids involved in different things that are already available. And even in boys' club and girls' club and all these different things like this, there are definitely opportunities in this town and we're doing a good job, but we need to make sure that it is explored more by our population. Ms. Sax?
I also agree. I feel like we do a fabulous job with our children these days. We have all kinds of programs with Parks and Rec, they're funded. One area where I've heard people come to me and mention that there's a hole and that is teenagers after school that aren't in sports programs to stay busy until the parents get home. I know Adventure Club does a great job with that, but I think that's somewhere where we can look into. Maybe we can help fund an area, work together with another group that's already in existence, and take care of those teenage kids that right now don't really have a whole lot going on after class. Thank you.
Christiansburg has become a destination for youth baseball, increasingly for softball, and through our recent public involvement input on our new park, our proposed park, 114. Interestingly enough, the biggest, the strongest request was for lacrosse, sort of an interesting epiphany with that. But soccer is growing and multi-use fields in particular are something that can provide a lot of options and something that we can, that we're focusing on to give us a lot of flexibility and with keeping our costs down to do this type of development. And lastly, and probably most importantly, our aquatic center, Mr. Hubbard mentioned it, Ms. Sax may have touched on it as well, but we have a tremendous resource there that we are attracting and involving our students in the Montgomery County school system, especially the Christiansburg strand, to get them in there and teach them swimming, second graders, and that is a gen, oh, stop.
You can't finish your sentence.
Yes.
I feel that with Parks and Recreation is a big area that we could concentrate on to send a little bit more funding to as well. A lot of the people that I've spoke to in the community have expressed the concern that they want to have their children in sports, football, basketball, or baseball through Parks and Rec, maybe not through the school team, but they just can't afford it. $55 here, you've got three kids, that adds up, uniforms, gas, if you're going out of town possibly. So if we could spend a little bit more money, maybe from the town, to try to ease some of those expenses for families, I think that would bring everyone together and possibly revenue from outside of the town for lodging and meals for our local businesses.
What's the next question?
I don't think I've answered yet. Matter of fact, I know I haven't answered yet. We, to echo what Mr. Stipes and most all of us have said, we have tremendous facilities here and not only do we offer swim lessons to every child, every second grader in town, but through sponsorships, we offer swimming lessons to every second grader in the county that are transported here. We also, at the aquatic center, they have an after-school program now that they will go to the local schools and pick the children up to come and stay until their parents get off from work. Someone talked about having fields that were not possibly utilized. Our fields, Kiwanis Park, Harprider, and others are used at least 41 weekends out of the year. So you have to cut down some time and fix them, but there are programs going year-round. We also are having an arts council that is another meeting going on tonight that we have requested that there be some art incentives for the children that may be interested in.
The next question, starting with Mr. Hubbard. Very specifically, what do you think are the most important things that could be done or should be done to revitalize downtown Christiansburg or attract more businesses to downtown Christiansburg? You know, a lot, that comes out a lot, that downtown Christiansburg needs to be revitalized. I'm not sure if I agree with that. I'm not sure how many storefronts that you see open on downtown Christiansburg. We have done a lot to work on that. You can see the sidewalks, the streets have been all upgraded. We have a major company that's coming in that's going to be working on maybe redeveloping parts of downtown Christiansburg. And I think too, that when we think about retail, we don't need to think just specifically of downtown. And here in Christiansburg, we really have three different facets here. You know, we have the marketplace, we have the mall, and we have downtown. And we need to support all of these. All these in their own little way have problems that they need to be done. But one of the things too, is we're getting a lot of activities going on downtown too that really is helping out that way too. Mike Markin is a good key.
I also agree. Seems like we all have a whole lot in common. One thing I would look at specifically for an older area of town, whether it be Cambria or Main Street, possibly Roanoke Street is also historic, and that's looking at grants that we can get. A local town near us just recently got a very big grant to help with their downtown area and I feel like we can do the same. We just got to put a little bit of legwork into it and that will help bring downtown into a little bit more modern look, develop things, make the fronts look better, maybe get some awnings, enhance where people actually want to walk downtown and go into stores. I would like to see more events, but I also want to make sure that the businesses on Main Street are taken into consideration with those events. I don't want the event on Main Street and then the businesses are shut down or covered up their storefronts. We need to be respectful for those who are here 365 days a year. I'd like to see business across the, generalize and look at our taxes and fees. Thank you.
Revitalizing the downtown, I think the biggest thing we need to focus on. We have more than 5,000 employees, 5,000 residents or whatever, employees in the downtown area within a one-mile radius of downtown. Our challenge is right now is keeping them down there after 5 o'clock on weekdays and also on the weekends, giving them a reason to be there. And I'll give you two specific examples, one for downtown and one for Cambria that we're focusing on. We need parking in downtown area behind the storefronts on East Main Street. We're working with, we're working with some private property owners there and hopefully we'll be able to get a well-lit, secure, attractive, welcoming parking area there that people can come down and park. And also through Cambria, the Crab Creek Greenway extension, which will connect to the Huckleberry Trail and come through downtown Cambria and out to Roanoke Street, will do a whole lot to reinvigorate that area as well.
I think we need to look at more than just downtown Christiansburg. Our small business community is getting thinner and thinner by the week. I'm sure a lot of people have seen Staples is leaving, Marketplace Plaza, as Mr. Hubbard says, almost completely empty at this point. We need to, we really need to look at our meal stacks. I mean, people just don't want to, they don't want to come here and spend their money. It's too expensive. I've even heard certain town people say that they would rather go to Blacksburg and that's heart-wrenching here, it really is. There's more empty storefronts in the industrial side of Christiansburg than there is on downtown. But we need to, we need to look at doing some funding for farmers market downtown and help arrange parking as well. I do agree with that.
Well, there, you know, we talked about grants for, that some of the smaller localities have gotten. And so often, those grants are based on the income of those specific areas and fortunately, we have a very reasonably, we have a very good economic or wage owner base here within Christiansburg. So some of those grants that are out there are not, would not really fit us, although doesn't mean that we don't have to try and that's exactly what we're going to do. We need, you know, we need to concentrate on other areas and I do know that there is some information floating around about the marketplace that is, that is in the process of being sold and redeveloped. So that is very good. We've been working on that for years. And all in all, I mean, everyone here has touched on something that I would have said had I wanted to continue on and repeat everything.
Mr. Woolwine?
The same question.
Yes.
I feel like that the downtown is, needs developed. We've got to get people that are downtown and vitalize that and get some more restaurants. I know that, I think there's a plan that they're going to build some housing on Main Street and, but, you know, you, there's just not anything really going on down there and it used to be such a vibrant and you go downtown, that's the place to go. And we just lost a lot of that, but I feel like there are some things that we can do to bring it back and there's just things we need to talk about and what they're best for the town of Christiansburg.
The next question, or set of questions really revolve around financial issues, budgetary issues, and I guess the best way to combine them is to ask, what do you view as the priorities in building a budget for the town of Christiansburg?
My question.
Your question.
I would consider looking at what's most important to us and starting there with the fundamentals and then working our way out. And we're not going to be able to make everybody happy all the time and we just can do the best that we can. But I would focus on making sure our first responders are taken care of, that our town workers are taken care of. That's two main priorities, pardon me, because without them, we don't really have support in our community and we need that support. We need the teamwork and we need police, fire, rescue in order to do that. So that would be my focus, is to make sure we're taken care of in that and then work our way out. Thank you.
Mr. Travis?
Being a sitting member of the Finance Committee for several years now, I sort of view a, as Jared Lee Marks over here this evening, my attitude every, each year is there's certain benefits and certain responsibilities that come along with being in town, whether you're a business owner, a resident, or an industry, and it's sort of a three-legged stool. We have residents, we have commercial businesses, and we have industrial. It's sort of a three-legged stool and there's benefits to being in town and responsibilities. And each year, we're constantly looking at that, at that quality of life and what we can do to, you know, provide those benefits and also how to pay for those. And so each year, it's a challenge to share the responsibility for what we'd like to have. We've heard a lot of talk this evening about wanting to spend more money doing things and it's, it's a lot easier said than done when you sit at this table and work out a budget. You can say, we need this and we need that, but the reality is you got to pay for these things.
Mr. Taylor?
Perfectly good points, honestly. The biggest thing that we need to concentrate as far as in the town is insurance for town employees. I feel that we're spending more on training our own employees for the town, police department, and potentially fire and rescue than we are setting aside for them. You know, town of Blacksburg, a family plane is around $250. For a town of Christiansburg, it's close to $1,000. Who is going to want to come to a town of Christiansburg to work and pay that much? We need to train and keep our employees here and in the end, saving more money of your and my tax dollars. Other than that, we need to stop spending so much money on projects that we don't need around Christiansburg before we get debt paid off. Once we get debt paid off, then let's look at the most important projects. Public safety should be priority number one. Insurance, number two. The pretty projects, number three.
Very interesting point. And the thing, the thing about it is we owe our first line of priority to our citizens, to our residents. We need to make sure that they are taken care of, their needs are met, fire, rescue, police, garbage, you know, the things that they rely on every day, providing a reasonable place for them to recreate in the off-hours. And, you know, it's hard to set and determine which policies are pretty policies that don't need to be done and which ones that are really essential, such as stormwater management in some of these areas that keep floodwater out of everybody's basement and everyone else. And I'm not talking about our rain tax or whatever fee you want to call it. I'm talking about the actual work that will prevent water from the neighborhoods from ponding up and flooding areas all over town.
Well, flooding has been a problem forever and I think some of it has been taken care of, but there is others. But I feel like the downtown is, it's in need of, well, let me just rephrase that. You know, I want to give thanks to our sheriff department, our police department, our, everybody that works on that and does what they have to do for the town of Christiansburg and I thank people for how many hours and what they do for us and events are always there and whatever we need, they give it to us. And we need to appreciate and move in the right direction and whatever it takes us to get to where we're trying to get, then I think it's going to be all right.
Mr. [inaudible]. You know, spending money is, and I believe Will Rogers once said, spending government money is easy. And if you don't watch it, from my point of view, as being on the town council, it is easy when they, somebody will bring up, let's spend $30,000 for this, $40,000 for this, or go there for that. And I think it's important from a councilman's point of view to look over the budget, decide what needs to be done and what needs, what needs to be cut. And I tell you what, I might not look, I'm a little bit older, but I am. And I try to speak for the senior citizens of this kind, of this town, because a lot of people are on limited budgets and they can't handle the tax increases. I think Brad just brought up a few minutes ago, people are saying, we could spend this and we could spend this and we can do this, but we can't do that. We need to try to control things. All right? We need to keep everybody that's here in this town aware of their financial situations. We need to keep everybody that's here in this town aware of their financial situations and keep it in, in good regards.
Start with this question. How would you characterize the relationship of Christiansburg to the county and to Blacksburg? What methods might we suggest to help these entities work together more productively?
Oh, that's a great question. We have come, I grew up in Blacksburg and went to high school in Blacksburg and chosen to raise my family here. The, the change in attitudes about regional cooperation is light years beyond its, more than it's ever been. We are cooperating on so many things. The most recent success we've had, I think, or two recent major successes, is the Regional Call Center, the Region 911 Center, which was, the impetus for that was the September tragedy at Virginia Tech, and, or the April tragedy at Virginia Tech. And we, the Joyner Study, or the Joyner, now, we're on the same water system, which attracts industries. And regional cooperation has never been as strong as it is right now, and that curve is going up. And last thing I'd like to say is, I'm of the mindset that whatever is good for Blacksburg, whatever is good for Montgomery County, is also good for Christiansburg. And that's the way I approach regional cooperation.
I don't know if I can top that. I mean, Brad hit the nail on the head with that. The only thing that I could add is, we need to work out a possible solution that, you know, maybe Christiansburg, Blacksburg, and the county could all get together quarterly and televise that meeting so the citizens in the county and both towns are more aware of what's going on in our communities. Maybe three and a half, Facebook, we've got all kinds of possible resources. Like I said, he hit that nail on the head.
We monthly have a liaison meeting between the town of Christiansburg, the town of Blacksburg, Virginia Tech, Montgomery County, and the Montgomery County School Board. We meet monthly for breakfast, and we deal in a lot of the issues of what's going on in our communities. Virginia Tech is involved, so we know what their plans are, they know what our plans are, and we all have a pretty good history of working together. Now, not to say that we don't have friendly rivalries with the town of Blacksburg or with Montgomery County. We certainly do. But the, as Brad alluded to, the 911 Center is something that has, has been a collaboration of, of all of us, as has been the, you know, the Water Authority. And the other thing that we have gotten a lot of help with from the counties, the county of the town, and Virginia Tech, is we've got Passenger Rail Service coming here. Hopefully by 2022 is a good time for that to be happening, but that is a large regional cooperation, and that's what we're doing.
Well, I really think that we've got a population of around 22,000 people in the town of Christiansburg. And I feel like that there's a lot of, no, not everybody understands what we're trying to accomplish. I feel like that, you know, and try to, instead of trying to bring them down here to the town hall, we need a bigger place where people can walk in and get a seat. There's a lot of senior peoples in the town of Christiansburg that, you know, the transportation, I'm not sure about, but we need to get these folks together once a month and, and talk with them and see what their concerns are about the town they live in. You know, we talk about Virginia Tech, we talk about this and that, the new fields and everything that we're trying to do, which are great. But are we working with individuals that, in the town of Christiansburg, that, that know nothing about what we're trying to accomplish? And, and everybody is saying, we should be doing this, somebody else says, well, it's because we, even though we may send out a letter, thank you, but we, we just need to communicate and engage with those people. Thank you.
I think we have a great relationship with Blackberry Tech and the county. As, and long that I've been a member of council, we've really have cooperated in, when there have been emergencies, that all four entities have worked together well. The only thing that I could maybe say, that the Town Council, we are not involved in the school system at all. But I think it's important that the council makes sure that the board supervisors, the superintendent and the school board know that we are interested in having good schools for our kids, and schools that are new and updated. And you know, we have a problem right now, all right? We have Blacks, we have Christiansburg High School was built in 1976, then got, you know, one thing is down and another. And we need to sort of, as a part of council, I have tried to push that and say, hey, you know, you cannot forget us, okay? Anything new, we need to go with Christiansburg. And to show you here, a little problem here, let me just quickly, there was a supervisor, and the lady said, she said, I hear that Christiansburg High School is going to get a new, new foamy track, that's going to be really nice. She says, how come we can't have that in Blacksburg? We want that in Blacksburg. And, and the superintendent said, oh, well, you have a $80 million school here. So we have to sort of, you're in fight a little bit. Sorry.
I'm going to be more ruthless.
I do feel like we do a good job to collaborate with the county and Blacksburg. The biggest thing that I could contribute is listening, having input, and collaborating. I don't feel like this job is a one-person job. We need a group, we need a team, we need to learn from other people, so that's how we improve each other. But I will go out on a limb and say, I don't think we're Blacksburg, and I don't want to be Blacksburg. We don't have a college in Christiansburg. We need to be Christiansburg, and we need to be good at what we're good at, and that is small-town living. That's where I'd like to be, and that's my focus. And I feel like if we listen, and we really pay attention, and then we collaborate, we can make that happen. Thank you.
There've been a number of questions about, about what should be added, what should we be doing more of. What, if anything, are we doing now that we might think if we were forced to it, where would be the first places that you'd begin to look for cuts?
Well, as I stated previously, I feel that we're spending too much money on too many projects that really don't need to be done in Christiansburg right now. Even though Park Street was a great, beautiful-looking sidewalk and paving of the road, I just don't see that that's going to be utilized. I feel that we could have put more money, or saved that money, for use of a better project. For another example, in front of Christiansburg High School, the current construction that's going on right now, that was started two weeks before school. That was the biggest mess I have ever seen. That should have been done during the summertime. Better planning, better appropriation funds. Thank you.
It's very difficult to determine what's needed and what's not needed, but let me, since Jonathan brought it up, the Park Street project, you know, deemed to be a waste of money, that was all block grant development money. They paid probably 1.5 million for that project, and we paid probably 20% of what the total cost was. So, yeah, and a lot of that depends on the grants that you get, and most of those grants are tied to getting a more interconnected city and town. And that's why those, those projects on Park Street were done to connect all of down, all the way down to Roanoke Street, and now with the sidewalk system there. So, is there anything we need to cut? I'm not sure. I mean, I really, having 18 years on the council, 14 as council and four as the mayor, I think we've done a really good job over the last several years of cutting things back. We're concentrating more now and now on what's needed to be done, and what, you know, we get a better bang for our buck that way. I don't see that we waste as much money as the perception may be.
Thank you. Mr. Woolen?
Well, you know, you got several phases that we're trying to accomplish, and the things that each, every one of you talk about, it's far enough, but the main goal is to make our town a better town, do things that, that people understand. We've got to engage in our, in our town, all the different departments. I just feel like that a lot of times, we just forget about what we're trying to accomplish, and, and I feel like that we, sometimes we do too much at different times.
You know, I think, while I've been here, I think the town is pretty frugal. The two town managers that we've had really watch, watch money. Now, you people in the audience, though, you might say, well, you have a rec center that loses money every year. You have an aquatic center that loses money every year. You have a cemetery that loses money every year. And that's true. But also, the quality of life that those three things produce, the things that do to make this life a better place for you to live, is so important. And I don't think that that is outrageous, that we have these commodities that don't produce revenue, but what they do to make your life better and to make it, people want to come in here and to live here, and I think that's important.
I feel like it's hard for me to express a sincere decision on this, because I was not part of the budget process and the discussions and the information that current Town Council's privy to. So to generalize that, I would really look at more about what we can't cut back on, and I don't feel like we can cut back on insurance. We're losing staff members. I've had leaders of groups and organizations come to me. We're retraining people consistently, which is extremely expensive, and they're going to other areas because the insurance is cheaper. So we really have to look at, you know, do we keep a decent insurance plan, or do we lose people and consistently retrain? I feel like, you know, we need to look at that a little bit deeper and see where we can put the money. So right now, I can't really tell you with facts that I would cut anywhere until I would be able to really look at the information that everyone else on council currently has available to them. Thank you.
Cutting, cutting spending. We've heard about some projects that might be wasteful, and Park Street, I hate to correct the mayor, but the Park Street project was actually a CD block grant, is 100%, federally funded. It's money that's available to us each year, $120,000, and if we don't use it, we lose it, and Blacksburg used to get our money. So when I got on council in 2008, we started looking at that again, and 2000, or, I got on council in 2006, by 2008 or 2009, I might be fuzzy on the date, we kept, or we started applying for that money again. So that's been 100% funded. The Huckleberry Trail, a lot of, most people in this room probably do not know this, but the Huckleberry Trail has been expanded from the Sears, behind Sears, all the way to the Recreation Center without $1 of town of Christiansburg money. So good examples of getting blood from a rock, and that's, that's what we do, watching the line and balancing the three-legged stool that I talked about before.
You had your shot at this one?
That was the first one.
The town works, actually, the council divides aspects of work within the council using a series of committees. Which one or ones would you like to serve on?
That's my question, right? Well, as the mayor, I'm an ex officio member of every committee that we have. However, during my, during my previous term on council, I've served on every committee that we have. I've served Central Business, Street, Public, or Water Sewer, and several terms on the Finance Committee. What do I think of the, oh, and one shot on the Recreation Commission. What do I think of the important committees? You know, to prioritize, I would say obviously finance, because that's what controls our, our spending. And secondly, would probably be Street slash Water Sewer. I mean, that's the one main area. We also have a, a committee that, that is set up for fire, police, fire, and rescue, and they're certainly all important, but they run as smoothly as possible. But if you're looking for the most attractive or the most bang for your buck, finance is probably the one that is going to, has the most allure, and that's generally, in the past, has been the two most senior members of council. Don't flash at it, man. You let these guys run three minutes, I'm going to...
Mr. Woolen?
Well, I feel like that everybody that spoke about this is, but the, you know, I think some people don't realize the money that we get from other organizations and everything like that, but the, the main goal, I feel like that is, here tonight, is bringing everybody up to par on what we're trying to accomplish, where the money's coming from. You know, if somebody, if you're building something and, and people think it's, it's coming, that they're out there taxes and what have you, I, I think that, that people get upset over that because, but if we had a way of communicating with those people, just like I said, if we had a meeting once a month, and not a place like this, because a lot of our senior peoples could not come up those steps. I know we have an elevator, but we'd like to get them into a smaller, I mean, environment and set them down and go over some stuff I think that is needed in, in the town of Christiansburg.
I tell you, right now, I'm on, I'm the liaison for two committees, the Cemetery Committee and the Aquatic Center. And I want to talk about the Cemetery Committee for a while, and I know everybody is really interested in this. But I would say, one of the high things that I have done as a counselor, and if you have not been up there lately, you're missing it, okay? We, and it's sort of through my, my guidance or whatever, we have a columbarium up there. And I think it's great, it is super, you know? And it is boiling down, and, and I'm not sure if you know it or not, but something like one-third of the people want to be cremated now, you know? And this fits in there. So I really feel, feel good about it, and I, my wife passed away several years ago, and I really feel, I feel that I have a closer connection to the cemetery, and I sort of can keep an eye on it. And the two guys who run it do a super job. My other thing that I'm into is, is the Aquatic Center, and I'm the liaison for that. And I have given, Terry's in the back row right now, and given them some, some ideas. And Mike was talking about the second grader, I got it.
Time doesn't matter, Steve. Apparently, time doesn't matter, it's okay.
Okay. When it comes to committees, I have 30 years of business experience. My background is accounting and entrepreneurship, and I feel like that's something that this council can use. We have a vast variety of backgrounds on the council right now, but there isn't one for small business. So my passion is going to be helping the small business, diving into finance. I'm like Mike, I'm a finance person, I love the numbers, I love the budget. A lot of people don't, you know? You sit there and you look at numbers all day long, but it's fabulous. I would like the opportunity to be able to serve on those finance and business committees, and even potentially look into a business liaison between the town and small business to facilitate that a little bit smoother, so we can make more progress. But I'm happy to serve wherever there is a need, regardless. Thank you.
The committees of Town Council give, give us a chance for the members to dig into the nitty-gritty and get in the weeds on issues and advise councils of very important assignments. The standing committees of council, I presently serve... The standing committees of council, I presently serve on the Finance Committee and also on the Street Committee. I'm a civil engineer by practice, so traffic and transportation are my field. I really want to be on the Cemetery Committee because I understand people are dying to get on that. But I can't seem to get on that.
You're the last one standing.
I'm sorry. I couldn't let it pass. And also, about five years ago, my other passion and reason I am for council is the expansion of our bicycle pedestrian facilities, and we started a bicycleye-walkway committee, and I also serve on that. And I'd like to continue on that. If that's a citizen's pleasure, I would like to continue on these committees.
In all honesty, I feel that all of the committees that are set up are very important. They involve different aspects of each of our lives, differently for you versus myself. In my personal opinion, I feel I would want to serve on the Finance Committee, and I would want to serve on the Planning and Zoning. Planning and zoning takes a lot of patience. And if anybody knows my day job, I drive a school bus. Let me tell you, I have a lot of patience. But planning and zoning is very important for Christiansburg. We need to make sure that the new areas, possible annexations are zoned correctly. We need to make sure that residential and businesses have enough area to grow. That way, we're not sitting on top of each other. I feel that I could, you know, give my best.
Mr. Woolwell? How do you feel about the noise ordinance situation in Christiansburg?
Well, you know, that was, that was put way before, and it needs to be changed. I think it's probably the, I think it's the code that needs to be revised.
It's the what?
The code. The code on noise needs to be revised. I think what that is our problem, because that was put into effect back in, I don't know, 40, 50 years ago, and, you know, things have changed. You know, you look at the traffic going down the roads and everything, the noise they make, and, you know, but I feel like that, yeah, exactly.
Boy, that's a hot one, isn't it? I see somebody on the front row, ready to come after you right now. Concerning, I think, I'm gonna talk a little bit about Starlight. The way I gather, and I've been over there, I think you have to look at both sides of the coin here. On Starlight, you, of course, the theater has been here forever. It's a landmark here in Christiansburg. Nobody wants to have it closed. I mean, it's important to the town. But on the other hand, you have to think about the community outside of the theater, the people who live around there, the people who have kids and who want to go to sleep a bit. So, and the town has worked, tried to work with that, okay? Now, talking about the Soul Shack here for a minute too. You know, that, I think Roger wanted a good point there. It needs to be revised.
I also agree. I think the noise ordinance needs to be revised, but I don't think it's a quick solution. There's a lot of points on the citizen's side where they do make sense. There's a lot of points on the businesses' side that make sense. I think we need to come together, truly listen to each other, and come up with a plan that is going to make everybody happy. One solution may not, you know, work for everyone, but I feel like if we don't listen to our businesses, they're also going to suffer, which helps tax revenue for the town. So, we want to be supportive of those businesses and get them with their sales. It's just a complete hamster wheel in a way. It helps everybody. So, I'd like to be able to come to the table, possibly with a few citizens' input, a few chamber input, and then come up with a decent solution, you know, and give it a shot and see if that's going to help each other. But if we don't listen, and all we do is become negative with each other, we're not going to make progress. So, that was my quick, short solution.
The noise ordinance, the noise ordinance is a good example of what I spoke about before about our zoning ordinance is a work in progress. It's continually something we revisit to balance the needs of the community. And Ms. Sacks, not as a slight, but if she is successful in her bid, I can assure her that we will not find a solution that pleases everybody. I can assure you of that already. However, it is a work in progress, and I think the most intelligent thoughts were made by Jared March to council a couple weeks ago. They were logical, and we do need to revisit our noise ordinance, and we need to look at that balance and look for public input to do that. And people let us to make decisions on their behalf, and we will make, hopefully revise, or hopefully make changes that will result in most people being happy.
This is a very close topic of mine. Starlight is very, very high on my list of priorities. Peggy Beasley is a wonderful person. I've known her for the past five years. And I know that Starlight is really the basis of this question. And it comes down to two major things for me: clarity of our ordinances and enforcement. The town has gone the wrong direction about enforcing it, because if anyone looks at the ordinance, Starlight and Fatbacks is completely operating 100 percent legally. If you are zoned in general business, B3 as both of those businesses are, the ordinance clearly says that you are exempt. And I feel, no matter how much rewriting or how much clarity or icing you put on top of the cake if you want to say it, it's not going to be easy. It's not, it's definitely not going to make everyone happy.
I almost got through the night without this thing. First of all, let me say that the noise ordinance in itself is in federal court right now, so there are legal opinions coming on this that I, I really am not going to discuss who is and who isn't, and why and why not. But all of the noise ordinances, all of the complaints we get on noise ordinances, whether it be in town, whether it be in the neighborhoods, or the other, are all complaint-based by our citizens. And if they feel that their right to enjoy their property is being impeded by excessive noise, then they certainly have the right to complain. I had an email from a lady today who said, "Lots of these businesses have to understand, we're not Las Vegas." And while we do, and I will show anybody who want the email, that we're not Las Vegas. The citizens come first in their, their, their needs for safe, sound, and for proper use of their, of their properties. It's just, if you have businesses that are continually causing that, then we feel they should be made accountable and payable for our personal property tax and real estate tax. I'll show you the email.
All right. We've gone through all the easy questions. Steve, you get, you get this one to start with. As a council member, how would you recommend the town prepare for a request to rally from an alt-right group or a white supremacist group coming to Christiansburg?
You know, that, I think that's what he's talking about, and everybody knows, we're talking about Charlottesville. And the week after that, I talked to Chief Sisson. And Chief Sisson told me that I think Montgomery County, Blacksburg, Virginia Tech, had all been meeting and discussing how to maybe handle the situation. Now, Chief, pardon, if I'm, if I'm wrong, you correct me on this. He says, "But a lot of things are so difficult when people want to have these rallies, that sometimes that you have to let them have a rally." But what they've tried to do now, maybe, is try to correct it that they cannot have signs, you cannot carry torches. And they have been starting to put down these restrictions for people who want to have these things, and to make sure that we're prepared to handle a situation like this.
Okay. The first thing I would do is reach out to our first responders. I would call Hank Martin. I would call Mark Sisson, both chiefs, and bring them on board and get their input. I couldn't even possibly imagine that I would have that experience to know better than those two gentlemen, how to handle a situation like this. So, in this situation, I would say teamwork is the best way to do it. I'd consider being proactive instead of reactive. And to do that, I'd pull those two gentlemen into the conversation and get their input, so together, we can all make a collective decision. Thank you.
Simply put, I would be, I would not be thrilled that Christiansburg was identified as a location where such a rally would be planned. I'm not qualified to speak on this as a constitutional attorney. I think people's right to free speech is there, but I would not, obviously, I would not be a fan of such a rally here. I think, but I would depend heavily, we have outstanding attorneys, and we have an outstanding police chief. And I would depend heavily on the advice we get from both of them on this rally or any kind of rally. It doesn't matter what it is. But I would depend on their advice, and we have outstanding, we can get good advice from them.
Very tough topic. It would take cooperation between county police and local police to deal with a situation like that. It's, it's very hard to come up with any solution because it does hinder anyone's or everyone's right to freedom of speech. But there has to be guidelines, you know? There's difference between a rally and a riot. There's difference from protest versus vandalism. So, when it comes down to it, our first responders, their safety is priority number one, along with their citizens. It would take a lot of, lot of teamwork between the three police forces to come to a solution.
Well, I think without saying, it's, it's, it's an ungiven word and an ungiven, or a given fact, that all three first responders, police, fire, and Sheriff's Department, Blacksburg, we all, we all work together on these things. And at any given point in time, when there is an issue, whether it's in our town, whether it's in Blacksburg, whether it's out in the county, you see us all there together at some point in time. Now, you get into First Amendment rights, you get into who can do this, you get into the rights to carry arms, you get, you know, it's, it's, it's a very difficult situation. I think we're working on the controls. I see legislature, I see people looking at, working on things within, like, you know, you can not carry sticks and this type thing. So, I don't know. I mean, it's a, it's tough to enforce. We are going to eventually have this come about. I hope that it is later than sooner, as we are working and with, with the areas, the local law enforcement, on a game, a plan of action. But there are some things, things you can, you cannot stop.
Mr. Woolwell?
I personally don't think that we are in a situation where, and of course, we've got people here that deals with that, but I cannot see Christiansburg in a situation like that. I've lived here all my life, and I just, it's something that I just don't, I don't think about. And I just don't think it'll ever happen.
This question has to do with your involvement. You were not given the opportunity to make an opening statement, and here maybe is an opportunity for you to talk about your involvement in the community. So, the question is, what is your commitment to Christiansburg? How are you involved in the community, other than your role either as a current council member or an aspiring council member?
Oh, okay. My biggest passion is charity. So, I currently have a business in Christiansburg for 20 years, 10 more years of experience before that. And I started Community Day, which is a nonprofit event that supported local charities. I served on the Board of the Salvation Army for seven to eight years. I didn't keep track after that long. I'm currently taking a little bit of a break to focus some time on my campaign. But that's my passion. I feel like it's our duty and our job as citizens and business owners to help others in need. We do co-program for the homeless. I mean, I, I really hate to sit up here and say all that we do, because I don't like to keep track of it. It's, it's an obligation, I feel, to the community. So, every day, every week, every month, every year, I think of ways that we can help others, because that's what makes our small town great. And I'd like to be a part of that and continue to do my charity work. Thank you.
I guess everything, they say, Robert Fulgham said, "Everything I learned, I learned in kindergarten." Actually, I learned a lot of Boy Scouts. I'm an Eagle Scout. I'm a Brotherhood Member of the Order of the Arrow, which is an honorary within Boy Scouts. And so, I've always been involved and always felt like to whom much is given, much is expected. And examples of that here in Christiansburg is coaching Little League Baseball for eight years. I've served on the New River, it used to be the Planning District Commission, now it's the Regional Commission, for 10 years. I served on the Town Planning Commission for seven years before deciding that we needed to span the Huckleberry Trail and get up on our horse and do that. And so, I guess service is something that comes naturally for me. And I say that, it sounds immodest, but I really, I truly feel compelled to do that, to serve. Muhammad Ali said, "The price for living on earth is service." And so, that's what motivates me and some other things that I've done, other than sitting here at this table every two weeks.
As you know, I drive a school bus, and I found that to be one of the most rewarding jobs, surprisingly enough. So, y'all have to say, sit down, and hear about their day and what they learned, and the enjoyments that they had. One of the negative sides of that is what's going on in their lives at home is hurting them. When I was younger, I had a big brother, his name was Justin, he worked at Sears when I was a baby, and he helped me get through my parents' divorce. And I've been trying to devote time to where I could be a big brother for a child in the school system, because it helped me grow and mature when I was younger. And unfortunately, I haven't been able to do that right here because of the campaign, and trying to better myself. Now, that is one thing that I plan on getting into after November, one way or another.
So, would you repeat that question, just to make sure I understand what page you're on?
Yeah, the question is, what are...
Don't start the clock yet.
I didn't.
What other kinds of activities, in addition to your role as mayor, are you involved in or have you been involved in with regard to your citizenship and participation in activities in the community?
Yeah, that's what I thought you said. I am, I've been a member of the Christians, an active, and there's a difference between being an active and a member. I've been an active member of the Christiansburg Kiwanis Club for over 45 years. I have given probably the last, I'm 69, the last 50 years of my life, almost every year back to the citizens, whether it's coaching Sound Lot Sports, whether it's in the Kiwanis Club, whether it's working with the other charities. I've been, the Quanian of the Year, I've been recognized by Kiwanis International as a distinct, distinguished president and secretary, which is very seldom ever done. The Kiwanis Club's mission is to make lives better for children and things to do for children. I currently serve, in addition to just being the mayor, I serve on seven boards and commissions that are, that represent the town and the citizens. I had 400, and since, since July 1, January 1 of 2014, I have attended 470 meetings, conferences, events, all representing the town of Christiansburg. Like Brad, I'm an Eagle Scout, and I've worked with a lot of the schools and the school systems on their merit badges. And I have spoken to every school in the town of Christiansburg and some in Montgomery County at least five times a year.
When you're, when you're out of town, you can do that to the mayor.
Just let me remind you, sir, you're not out of town yet.
Mr. Woolwell?
I coached Sound Lot Baseball I coached sound lot baseball, basketball, and football for years, and just enjoyed heck out of it. And I'm in the Kiwanis, I'm on my 24th year in the Kiwanis, and I've really enjoyed that, but just been, been in church and, and for all my, basically all my life, it's been a pleasure, just growing up with a bunch of kids and teaching them things that, that we do at St. Paul Methodist, and it's just been a great gratitude to, to be part of that organization and that church, and, but it's been a lot of fun.
I taught school here in Montgomery County for about 32 years, and almost all that time, I coached. I coached either football, tennis, or cross-country, and was involved with a lot of kids, one way or another. Sometimes I did a good job, and sometimes I didn't do a great job, but I tried to do a good job. I've been on the Board of Directors for the Montgomery Museum, here for the last five years, and we think we've really been trying to do new things and trying to get the museum involved in the community. And I'm also deeply involved in my church, it's Holy Spirit Catholic Church, that's right across the street from the high school, and... All right, the last question before we get to the closing is, how would you work to assure diversity in the committees, in the commissions, in the boards, in the advisory committees that relate to or work for or in advisory capacity to town government?
Why, I get to start that? Okay, well, I'm proud to say that, growing up in Blacksburg, my dad was a college prof at, at Tech, and throughout, growing up, I grew up colorblind, we hosted, we had Vietnamese boat people live with us back in the mid-'70s, if you remember that crisis. We've had Nigerians, students live with us, every Sunday after church, or most Sundays after church, my parents were very, are open-door policies. So I grew up sort of colorblind, I'm still in colorblind, and ethnic blond, and I think, all else equal, we need to, our, every aspect of our town government needs to reflect our community. And to my knowledge, I don't know of any major problems we have in that area, but I support that, and if there's ever any problems with that, we, we, yeah, so I think that's about it.
I'm proud to say that I have, I have six of my close friends that are different nationalities from myself, and I see no difference in how I can talk to Brad, or I can talk to my friend. It's, it's sad that nowadays, there is a color difference, or there is race inequality, but I believe that as a town and our local government, we can really overcome that by setting strict guidelines that that won't be tolerated. It's 2017, we're not living in the 1800s anymore. We are all good people, most of us are friends in here, and I believe that's how it should be, especially for our local government.
Well, you know, with, with most of the commissions, and, and I will talk about, we'll say the Recreation Commission, the Planning Commission, Zoning Appeals, those are appointed by the town based on applications from the citizens. The town has a standing liaison to all of them, but when there is an opening, we advertise, and sometimes even recruit, to get the best candidates to fill that particular job on that particular committee. So there is, there is no race or gender issue in my eyes that I, that I see. You know, sometimes you have problems getting qualified applicants from any pool, and you have to go with the best that you can, you know, that is available to you when the applications come in. And the applications, they're like this. You don't know, and, and that's good. You don't know. Thank you.
Mr. Woolwine?
Well, I guess that most people know, I've always been a passionate about what goes on in the courts, and when I was, and I've got a lot of experience going to court all the time, because I ran with supermarket for years, I had to go on bad checks, I learned other things I hadn't learned, but I've always wanted to be either only council or, or run for mayor, and, and like everybody here that knows that, I'm running for mayor this year. So I want to be part of that.
You know, my dad was in the, in the service for, for 30 years, and during that time, ethnic differences were, were not, you know, no one paid attention to that. And as I told you a minute ago, I coached for over 30 years, and, you know, any, any kid who wants to play for me, the door's open, and we're gonna, you gotta work with him. Or, or, here for the town of Christiansburg, I think that we do everything we can to have equal bill, time for everybody to, to get involved. And I think the town's policy on this is, the best person is going to get the job, and I agree with that.
Okay. If I read the question correctly, it's a work to assure diversity. I don't think we can assure diversity, because then we're actually being discriminatory. If we said, "We need this percentage, and this percentage, and this percentage." In my company, we look at all the resumes that come in, we don't know what color, race, or ethnicity, and we don't know any of that. We look based upon your qualifications. Then we do a phone interview. We still don't know who you are. We listen to what your qualifications are. I think that's the best way it should be, no more than I would want any of you to vote for me because I happen to be the only female up here. I want you to vote for me because you think I'm the best person for the job. And that's kind of my stance. I, I don't think, like, you know, Mike said, when things come in, you don't know anything about the person, other than what they have on that piece of paper. If I could not look at anybody and then hire from that, you know I, I did that hiring based upon the best qualification, and that's what I'd like for everyone out here to do, listen to what we have to say, and then vote for the best person for the job.
Well, we've, we've reached the bewitching hour, and this is now time for each candidate to take up to two minutes to make a closing statement, and I'm gonna break the order now and go back and start where we began this evening, with Mr. Barbara.
Well, I have, I'm a lifelong resident of the town of Christiansburg, I graduated through Christiansburg School Systems, I have associate degrees in business management and accounting from National Business College, I have a degree from the School of Banking of the South at University of Virginia, which is a three-year program, I have a degree from the School of Banking at Louisiana State University, which is a three-year advanced senior bank management class. I spent 43 years as a banker. I have spent the last 14 years, I've spent 14 years on the town council. The last four years, I was, I was the mayor, so I have 18 years on council. I keep open office hours every day. I was once told, "You don't need to come in at about once, once a week for an hour or so." I come in at 8:30 every morning, I'm here until the job is done. It's sometimes noon, it's sometimes 10:00 in the morning, it may be 4:00 in the afternoon, but I have open office hours. I answer my emails, I respond to my cellphone calls, I constantly communicate with citizens, my door's always open, people are ready to come in. And I think that, in our last little hurrah about what, what all have we done, as I said, you know, there, there's the Passenger Rail Service Committee, Development Committee, Development Authority, Neuro Valley Health Organization, Neuro Valley Metropolitan Planning, Montgomery County Chamber, gotta even spend time as Vice President of Bud Foster's Lunch Pale Defense Foundation. That's on me, that's not, that's not town, but all of the other things I have been appointed to by the town. I do spend a lot of time in the schools with our students, is it a minute or two minutes? Okay, we're good. I do spend a lot of time in the schools with our students, I, I do speak to lots of classes every year and everything, from government to reading Winnie the Pooh and Dr. Seuss. And I do think I am the best candidate for the mayor's position.
Mr. Woolwine?
I'm Roger Woolwine. I've lived in Christiansburg all my life. I married to my beautiful wife back there, Brenda Shaw, Woolwine, and we've had a wonderful life together, and we raised two kids, and we, then we got six grandkids, and wonderful grandkids. I love them all. And, and, but I've always wanted to, I, I, when I, when I was in high school, I played quarterback, and I was moved up to varsity, second game of the season in my freshman year. Actually played with Tommy Barber, Mike's older brother, and what an athlete he was, and we were just wonderful friends. But I had a wonderful relationship with all of them, but I, I played football, basketball, and baseball, I loved all the sports, and had a lot of opportunity to go other places, and, and I didn't, but it's, it's been, it worked out great for me, had an opportunity to run with supermarket, I've, I've worked for Louis Barber at Motel Roberts, when, before he became Sheriff of Montgomery County, and worked at Corney for 10 years, and it's just, it's been a good life for us. And I'm proud to be here with you guys tonight, and thank y'all.
I've got a flyer here about my background, and I gave it to some people, and I've got it on a table in the back, so I'm not gonna spend all that, much time on it. Graduated from University of Georgia, got my Master's at Virginia Tech, was a teacher, coach, and guidance counselor for over 30 years here. I was a platoon leader with 101st Airborne in Vietnam, and I retired as a Lieutenant Colonel in the Army Reserve. But one thing I wanted to bring out really was, for the last eight years, I have been part of the town council here, and I feel just so good about it, about the people that I've been able to work with. And I really feel that you people have not been cheated at all. I think we have an excellent council. I think we've had a good group of, of people, and we talked about diversity a few minutes ago, and I'll just bring up Brad to start with. I mean, Brad is, is an engineer, he knows about stormwater, he knows about holding ponds, he knows about curbs, he knows about traffic, he knows all these different things that have really, when I first got on council, I didn't realize that that was such a big part of the game, but to have somebody with so much knowledge and life that to help out. And Mike, Mike is a bar, a banker, a retired banker, he knows about things of that nature too, and, and Court Hall, Court Hall is a lawyer. So we've just had a great diversity of, of people, to be able to talk about different things and handle situations. And I'm not trying to tell you that everything has been rosy and that everybody gets along all the time, but we all have an opportunity to, to exchange ideas and different ways that we look at things, and, and I would, I would like to do it for another four years, and I would, I appreciate your vote. Thank you. Thanks.
All right. I have all my information out on Facebook. I feel like it's more important for me to possibly talk about what I can do for you as citizens and business owners. We all seem to have some degrees and some interest and some backgrounds, and, and I'm no different, but the one thing that I can bring to the table is 30 years of experience in business, thinking about budgets, planning. I'm very good about working with people. I'm not one of the single people that just, you know, champion out there and yay for me. I'm one of many. So I want to work with the council that you elect, and do the best job that I can for you, for this community. And if I can have that privilege, it would be fabulous. I'd love to see what we can do as a team and collaborate together, and learn from everybody's experiences. And I would appreciate your vote. Thank you.
Mr. Stipes?
I was first elected to this board in 2006, and I had two strikes against me. I was young at that point, and I was also from Blacksburg, and that's not, I have stayed true, I have stayed true to my platform when I initially ran in place to increase bicycle pedestrian mobility and to increase transparency in this town within a year of being elected. The Huckleberry Trail was on its way up to 114, and since that time, there's constantly been improvement in this area, and also there's the town website. The first town website was launched within a year of my first election as well, because it was basically a closed shop here, and it's no longer anymore. It's, I've got glass doors on Town Hall figuratively, maybe the middle one too. I'm a civil engineer, I tend to be more analytical and logical in my decision-making, which I think is a benefit to this, to this board, rather than emotional. And finally, some people have a mistaken notion that this is a democracy, it's not, this is not majority rules, this is a republic, it's representative form of government, people make, people choose other people to make decisions on their behalf, and it's been an honor to serve the people of Christiansburg and to make decisions on your behalf, and if you feel more, if you feel comfortable to let me do that for you for four more years, I'd be happy to do it, and if not, I'll find another tree to chop on.
Mr. Taylor?
Well, I hope that my age will not be a determining factor for you. I feel that I can bring new experience for current generations and future generations to help change the town of Christiansburg for better, not only to tighten the budget down a little bit, but to throw a little oomph into our small business community. I, I like to think that I have the will and the motivation to, to go until it's done. Just, I would like to see more positive change and less negativity coming from the town than it has been this previous year. I would appreciate your vote. I'm not gonna ask for your vote, but what I will ask for is that you do go vote, because that's the one thing that I want you to take away from here. Thank you for coming tonight.
Thank you. Well, on behalf of the League of Women Voters, and the Montgomery County, Radford City, Floyd County, and WACP, I want to thank the candidates for being here tonight. From my own perspective, it's been a pleasure to have such a civil, thoughtful discussion from people who deeply care about their community. That's not what we see every night when we turn on our TV. And so with that, and thank you in the audience for coming out tonight. We appreciate your being here, drive carefully, and I would echo Mr. Taylor's recommendation, be sure you vote. Thank you.